So I'd like to call this meeting to order of the School Committee, November 30th, 2017, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just want to remind everyone the meeting's being recorded, and if you could silence your phones or any other devices, that would be great. I'd also like to mention that, I want to ask everyone here to definitely speak into the microphone. I've had a lot of people over the last few months say that we're not always able to be heard, and so if we can be sure to speak into the microphone, I'll remind the candidates as well. First up, is there any public comment related to tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, I thought we would start off by discussing the process that we're going to go through tonight. So first, just wanted to thank the Advisory Subcommittee for what they, the work that they did to bring us these finalists, and let you know what the finalists have done since the start of this process. So they completed a task and submitted it to the School Committee. And then Holly and I checked their references, and I have a summary of those here that I will give each of you. And according to, I checked with Suzanne Egan, and she said that these are not public documents because they are part of personnel files, and so while we can look at them, I'll collect them back afterward, and they're not, they'll go into the personnel file. So these are one of each. Yeah, and these are just the summaries of the reference checks that we did for the candidates. Pass this over to Helen, so you can take a look at those. We'll spend a few minutes taking a look at those. So then we, some of us went and visited, did site visits at both candidates' districts, and then today, both candidates had a chance to meet with Andrew Mailer. They met with parents and community members, high school, middle school teachers, elementary teachers, central office, got a tour of North Andover, or possibly in one case, gave a tour of North Andover, I'm not sure. That was a possible switch in that process, which would have been, I think, valuable because that person does give new teachers that tour. And then had dinner with two of our chaperones, we called, each had two chaperones who were from the Subcommittee that we had in place to find the candidates. And I want to specifically thank the chaperones, who were Allison Trendy and Ryan Landry for Dr. Zalinski, and Laura McMillan and Kate Lobel for Mr. Gilligan. So what I want to suggest for tonight's process for the candidates is that each have a 45-minute interview. Give them two minutes to do an introduction. What we're going to go to next is look at the seven or eight questions that we want to ask the candidates, and then give them like two minutes or so for a wrap-up. Again, keeping that to two 45 minutes. Does that make sense to everyone? Exactly, good, okay. So if we can take a look at the questions, and then just to let people know, and I'll reiterate this at the end, we will be deliberating and voting on Monday, December 12th, which is next Monday, at 6:00 PM at the Board of Selectmen's Meeting Room. The reason why we're doing it there is strictly because we need to be at the Board of Selectmen's Meeting immediately following, and we have an executive session in between, and we didn't want to be here, under pressure, rushing through things, and then driving down to Main Street parking and all that. So we're just going to have the whole thing there. The North Andover cam will be broadcasting, as usual, on the education channel for our meeting, and when it's time, they'll switch over to the Board of Selectmen's Meeting on the government channel. So that's the story there. So for questions, yes?
The references that you passed out to us, I'm just trying to make heads or tails of them. So first of all, we don't know who wrote these?
Correct. Well, on the resumes that you, they got, you got of them, they all gave reference people, and Suzanne said it's best not to say who said what, but just to share the comments.
That's what she said, huh?
Yes.
Did she give a reason why she said that?
She did.
I kind of see not one of the names to get out, but I'm...
Well, it's because it's a personnel record, and I mean, if it's important to you, I can tell you.
No, I mean, this is, this is an interesting way of doing references. I've never...
This is what she had recommended to me.
Okay. And these, just to stay on the same subject, because they're interesting, how you have it written here. Did you come up with these questions on the side?
We did.
For the references to ask?
We asked, we asked the references.
Okay.
And they were kind of similar, and we discussed it with the Subcommittee. We used similar questions in some regard on the Subcommittee search to the candidates. And then when we talked, when we picked our finalists as Subcommittee, talked a little bit about what would be great to learn more about, and so we asked the references along those lines.
Uh-huh. Okay. Thank you.
All right, so these questions here, I know you've had a little chance to preview them. Right before I came, I did receive from a community member four other question suggestions, so they're at the end, and so we can take a look at those as well. So as you can see, we have, you know, 20, over 20, almost 30 questions in some cases for the possible questions of the candidates. We need to take six or seven, I mean, seven or eight. So some of us went in and just said, you know, I'd use, just saying, I think it's an interesting question, but it would be great to take a couple of minutes and finalize what questions we're going to ask, who will ask them, and then decide on what order before the candidates commence. We have a good amount of time to do that. If there's any questions in particular you want to discuss.
I would propose that we just kind of rotate around.
Okay.
Start at either side of the room, it doesn't matter to me. And I think some of the questions that may be asked may be in part based upon the responses that the candidates provide.
That's good. And another question would be, you know, if we pick seven questions, and there are follow-up questions that any of you want to ask, how do you want to handle that? Again, I'm very mindful of giving, we have the very set window of time, and we just want to be sure that we don't spend so much time on one question that we leave three off at the end, so...
Right.
But I understand that follow-up questions will probably be required as well. So you'd rather not pick all the questions in advance, just pick as you go?
I don't see any reason why we would pick our questions in advance.
Okay.
I think that obviously you, Helen and Holly have kind of said what questions you want to ask, so I think we should kind of stick to that. My only suggestion would be if, if I'm asking a question and I have some follow-ups, I should be able to ask those follow-ups prior to someone else asking a tangential or follow-up question.
Okay.
Okay?
I think it would be helpful also if you're the question-asker, the person gives the answer, there are no follow-ups, you know, say "thank you," which would also indicate we're finished with that question, we're going to move to the next one.
So you're thinking we'll get one to two questions each, depending on how we rotate through?
Right. I had just picked one for myself because I wanted to give you all a chance. I mean, Holly and I have interviewed these people once before, so I was trying to defer to the three of you to have a chance. So one, one, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, so eight. Good math there.
I did two on one of them.
Eureka.
You did, yeah. That's...
I mean, feel free to ask, I'm just saying I've...
The ones that you liked, right.
The ones that I thought were most important to ask, I put my name on it.
I think there's, yeah, there are some that are pretty important, and some that, you know, hopefully in people's opening statements, they're going to address some of these things, but...
So the number one question is a follow-up, if they don't address it in their opening statement, can I ask the chair to ask that question if they don't address that in the opening statement?
Mm-hmm.
Is that good with everybody?
Because it is kind of a warm-up question.
Well, and then, I mean, if we only get to ask one question, we won't have, you know, used that one.
That's why I picked just one that I was really, really keen on asking. But I like, I like a lot of them, that's what's so hard about this. There are a lot of really good questions, and good questions came in too, so... And some of them are a little redundant of each other as well. So the way that these came from were questions that were compiled at the last superintendent search, questions that we compiled through the Subcommittee feedback, and then some that I just, we all just kind of thought of as we've looked at the candidates.
So we'll ask our, our two ques, two questions, I mean, I'm trying to figure out, probably time for several...
Well, that's why I was hoping to like determine that in advance.
Oh, okay, okay.
But if we're not going to determine it in advance, you can go around in a circle.
You're the chair, you make the rules.
So...
I think we should probably figure out what are the seven or eight most important questions.
I think so too.
I'd like to ask.
I'll just start, the things that I'd like to focus on. Obviously, I've been focusing most of my, my time on the school building construction, focus on the impacts of those two potential projects, as well as, you know, just especially with the first candidate, hear about her experience. That's one thing I like to focus on, and another thing I like to focus on, if no one else is going to, is our relationship with our teachers' union. I know myself and Mr. McDevitt spent a lot of time earlier this year, really, I think we have a fantastic relationship with our teachers' union. I'd like to hear, you know, some of the answers to those questions, that'd be the subject matter at least. And I don't see that phrase exactly here.
Right.
I think one of the questions that came in late today about building a new middle school from a parent, I could probably use some of that question.
Mm-hmm.
But those are two things I like to focus on at least.
Right.
I think those are great questions. One of my primary questions for Dr. Zalinski really has to do with King Philip is a 7-12 district.
Absolutely.
And we are pre-K to 12, so exactly what that entry plan is going to look like as she looks at an entire North Andover, North Andover education. And I think after meeting with her and her staff down in Norfolk yesterday, we certainly kind of heard how she had to morph the three different towns, different philosophies, and she's certainly coming at the North Andover way, but merging those five elementary schools and kind of looking at what that curriculum is. So I think there are some pieces in here in terms of, you know, how we look at curriculum and, you know, what that is, but I'm really concerned about the, the pre-K to six timeframe.
Right, exactly, good. So you're going to ask something along those lines? Great. Any other topics here?
That's probably my number one.
Okay, that's great. I will, as, Mr. Carr?
I was just going to say, I had the luxury of kind of having, having time with her staff yesterday, so some of these have somewhat been answered.
Right. And that's kind of how Holly and I had felt that we've, parts of these things we had answered, and we came up with questions where we felt we still had holes.
So Helen, go ahead.
Can I jump in?
Please.
Yeah, I think it's important to find out about how she's using data to inform decisions, how that's impacted testing outcomes and measures.
I think we have a couple pieces along those lines.
So I think that's, yeah, there's a couple of questions along those lines, so I think I would ask about that. And then I think, you know, the other important question is, there's going to be an awful lot going on on the 1st of July. So there's a, there's a good question in here about, you know, how the, how the candidate is going to, you know, come in and start working with two freshman principals who have just finished their first year, a new building coming online, needing to hire an assistant superintendent, needing to...
Possibly.
Possibly, yeah, possibly, needing, needing to hire, having, having hired a middle school principal who will start on that same day.
Will be starting, right.
Right.
I wrote that very, very long question, but I feel strongly that it should be asked by somebody.
There's a lot going on, and I think that, you know, hearing how they would respond to, there's a lot going on, it's important.
Because, yeah, I agree that that's a huge one. So you want to ask that one?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, great. Of both candidates, I think.
I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think they both should answer that. Any other ones that you're keen on, or?
No. I mean, those, we're going to have very little time.
Right. Ms. Lynch?
It goes quick.
It does, that's right. That's why I kind of wanted to sort it first, so...
I'll ask the administrative question, number 19, that I identified, and then I'll ask number 16 on the MCAS.
Number 16?
Yeah.
Oh, on here, okay. So that's for Dr. Liz. Okay, then the one that I wanted to ask was about the criteria you'd use to recruit and hire a principal.
Right.
And how you'd probe for successful leader. Okay. Are there any major gaps people feel that we're not addressing?
Are these just the questions for the first candidate?
It sounds like those, for the most part, were the first.
That was the first, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I haven't, no, no, I just wanted to...
So, but is there any other for, for Dr. Zalinski that we feel we're, again, we're tied in time? So right now I have potentially one with, if I have to ask the opener, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. So, eight, eight without, it's just because of this opener, so that's all right. We'll work that out. I can't imagine, these are very basic questions, I can't imagine that the two-minute opener won't address these things, but I will, I'll probe into that if we need to. Sound all right? Okay. For Mr. Gilligan...
Are we leaving them time to ask us questions?
They could use, I was proposing they could use the two minutes as a wrap-up or to ask us questions. We did give them opportunities to ask us questions during our site visits and during our, our first. Would you, do you feel like we need to? I just, I feel like it is valuable in some cases, but it'd be interesting to hear how they summarize their main reasons why we should hire them.
I don't know how that feels, but whenever I ask a candidate for a job, I feel like they're struggling to find a question to ask just to keep the conversation going. I don't feel like they need to do that. There's a lot here to cover, so...
And they did ask questions in the first round?
They did, that's right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You may wish too, when you ask them to do their opener, to address why specifically North Andover as part of that, so then they wouldn't have to ask that question at all.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a perfect way I can do it with that, yep. Okay? All right, so for Mr. Gilligan.
I was looking at, I'd obviously ask the similar question about the school building stuff, but I feel I pretty much know his relationship with the teachers, but I'd like to focus on number nine, him working directly with the principals to generate student performance.
Okay. And you're going to ask the one about building, yeah, right? You said about buildings?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can work that in as well.
Okay, good.
It's probably not as, as important because he's obviously, obviously familiar with what we're doing, but I would probably ask this first question, if there was time, I'd ask the second one.
Okay. Mr. McDevitt?
So I particularly like, I mean, obviously, Mr. Gilligan's been a resident, a teacher, a principal, assistant superintendent, not, if he were to get the job, I mean, he's now the man in charge. So how do you maintain that level of, you know, 20, 30 years of friendship and working relationship into a professional, or modify that professional relationship where you are now the boss?
That's right.
And it's kind of alluded to here in number four, with difficult personnel and administrative decisions without impacting potentially personal relationships and ones that he's seeing and hearing, as I joke, on the soccer fields and baseball around town.
Right.
And then I think, you know, the other thing that isn't necessarily in here is, he's been here for a long time, and he's had an opportunity to assess and understand exactly what we're doing, but never necessarily been the one to, to make the call, to call the shots.
Right.
So what is the gap that he sees? Where do we need to...
I feel like we have here somewhere two.
Yeah, it's just, it's worded a little differently.
But if you want to work with that, I think that would be great.
So, I mean, that, that's really, you know, what's his quote-unquote "inside" opportunity.
Okay. So you're going to definitely work with number four, because I think that's really important, we get at that.
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's, and I think a couple of people had flagged it earlier, so...
Yeah, good.
My Google Docs didn't work, so I didn't flag this.
So are you asking four, or am I...
Holly, you call it first.
He can, he can ask if you want.
So that's fine, you know, I am fine with number 12 as well. I had kind of flagged that as another important one related to special education and the impact that it has on our district.
And that's good because we asked that in the Subcommittee questions, and we were interested from all the candidates to hear more about that, so that's great to use that. Okay. Helen? Do you have any comments?
So, you know, so again, I'll ask that big, long, complicated question about day one.
Good.
I think it's really important to ask a question about how this person would go about recruiting and hiring. So there's a couple places where that's asked. One of them, you tagged about recruiting a new assistant superintendent.
Right.
Another one has to do with about recruiting and hiring a principal. That's going to be one of the most important jobs, whether that's done in the first year or the third year, or, you know, whatever it's, whatever it's done. So I think that, you know, perhaps those two can somehow come together, and, and I'm happy to have you do that.
Right, I definitely wanted to do number five.
Yeah.
You wanted me to add to that about hiring a principal too?
Well, I mean...
Because I think those are two, to me, those are two very different questions. Because this is really getting about for me, is not only how would you, if you were superintendent, how would you replace yourself as, part one, as teaching and learning assistant superintendent, but also how would you help the person grow, which, who might come up with ideas beyond all the work you've spent doing the last several years, like, you know, a little bit of letting, letting go or letting fly a new person's perspective? So to me, that's very different from hiring a principal, to me.
Then, then I would go with the principal question as my second, should I have time?
Okay. Which is what number, because I can't remember.
Ten, number 10.
Number 10, thanks. Oh, you have your name, okay, great.
I feel like I'm on Jeopardy. Number 10 for...
For 200.
For 200, that's right.
Ms. Lynch?
I'll ask four and six.
Okay.
Maybe explain what the athlete...
The audience, we know what they are about.
So four is the one that Mr. McDevitt started talking about, about making difficult decisions when you've been a part of this district for so long. And then the other one is what he's learned in his role as an assistant under two very different superintendents, and what he can bring to the superintendent role.
Perfect. And by the way, if anybody's worried, again, we have the two chaperones with each candidate taking them to dinner, doing things, they're not sitting at home watching TV to get the questions in advance, so don't worry. So...
Did you call that they were two very different superintendents?
I did.
Perceptive.
Yep. And then I was going to ask, which, what Helen mentioned about the assistant superintendent, if he had to replace himself. So that gives us, with this one, two, four, five, I think we're at nine again, right? So that's, I'll work in the beginning. Six, seven, eight, nine. Okay, good. So we're kind of all set with that. I don't know if you want to take a minute just to look at their, but you can also look at it afterward if you need to, and in between the references, so...
So I think that's fine, I just have a quick question. I noticed Caitlin is here, and I'm just curious, are you here for a student report?
Yeah, I did see Caitlin.
Okay.
We actually, we can totally cut in to do that right now.
Yeah, let's do it.
I'm sorry, it was not the agenda, but I'm grateful that you're here, Caitlin, so...
Like, I don't want to wait to the end and have her be like, "I have a test."
Can I talk? Right. So we'd love to have Caitlin Dolly, or one of our student representatives, come up and let us know the action that's going on in the district, students.
So yeah, so it's finals week this week, so that's why I was a little late, I was studying. But luckily, we're on our last one tomorrow, so we've survived the week, which is a good sign. I think this is the first meeting since the Thanksgiving pep rally. I think it went off really well. I wasn't personally in it, but it was really cool, the different dance numbers that they successfully managed to pull off, and the drum line was amazing. And then Liam told me to say that the robotics tournament went off well.
That was big.
I wasn't personally there, but I will take his word for it. And then for an upcoming event, I know that the Drama Guild is putting on a Disney cabaret, and it's on December 9th, and it's at Acting Out in Lawrence, and it should be really cool because the students have been working on it for a little while. And there's also a coffee house this Friday that is put on by many of the chorus and band students.
Is that coffee house just the high school, is it also the middle school singers?
I believe it's just the high school.
Okay, because I know that the middle school does coffee houses too.
Right.
Hot cocoa houses, they do.
Oh, that's right, that's right, yes.
To differentiate and not confuse.
Yes. Is that the reason why?
Yeah, 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 no, I think that's the reason.
Because I would go to the hot cocoa house because I don't, because I don't drink coffee either. Okay, good. Thank you so much. Hey, good luck with your last final.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Thank you.
So you're going to sleep all weekend?
Uh, probably.
Thank you, Caitlin. All right. I guess we could start a little early. What I was going to, I can run and tell, yeah.
So I'm just curious, now that we've kind of gone through the process...
Yes.
Do you have any questions maybe from anybody about it? I'm not sure we want to go back to public comment, but is there any clarification that we need?
Well, that's right, I tried to, I mean, about what we've already done, or about, I tried to go over the finalist stuff.
Yeah, I just, I just kind of meant like the public that's here.
Right.
Any clarification?
Of what we just discussed, you mean?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, sure, that's fine.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions or comments about what we just discussed in terms of the process, we're going to use over the next hour and a half, welcome to come up and ask or share that.
Okay.
All right. No, that's very inclusive, Mr. McDevitt, that's very good. All right, so, can read your notes. I'm going to clean up my papers and be right back.
Want to say a word in brief recess, maybe?
Sure, do I need to do that to lead the room?
You can leave the room.
I didn't know that.
Just to...
I was just going to come say, I think we're ready to come on up.
Yeah, we'll get rolling early.
Why not? And I actually, I want to let everyone know who's in the room and who maybe didn't get a chance to meet Dr. Zalinski earlier today, and we experienced this going down to see her yesterday. She had a terrible cold yesterday, and when she arrived today, she has two-thirds of a voice, or had two-thirds of a voice, it might be down to a third, I'm not sure. So I will, want to give you that heads up in advance, and so...
Is that why she gets two bottles of water?
That is exactly why I took her two bottles of water. And, and I actually put pepper mints in case she starts to cough, I'm not, she didn't have a cough earlier, but, you know.
Honey, honey would have been good.
I, I wasn't there with that, sorry. Almost not prepared.
Little tip.
So it seems, David, that it would probably be best for you to start, rather than me starting with this complicated question of arriving on the first.
We don't need to start the ends, I don't know, I don't think the school building committee question is as critical as probably Amy's question and some of his other questions.
Okay. It's just, we're going to start at one and then the other.
Whatever the chair thinks is...
All right.
You can just go in order of the questions.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
That's brilliant.
That's why you're here, Holly.
Hello, Dr. Zalinski, everyone, I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Zalinski. I gave them a preview. I'm terribly sorry.
It doesn't hurt, it's just...
Right, right. Well, just...
Well, pretend it's a microphone.
That's right. I was just gonna say, just to let you know, we have been told over many months that people are difficult to hear on TV. So if you would actually speak into the mic times two, since your voice is challenged, we totally appreciate it. Thank you for being here, I hope you enjoyed your afternoon in North Andover.
I did, it was, it was a great visit today. Everyone was very kind and very gracious in the whole process and I really appreciate the fact that you've invited me back here to talk with you a little bit more about your great school system and looking forward to the opportunity to possibly to lead your system.
Great. So just to give you an idea of the format, we're forty-five minutes, sounds familiar, right? If you want to give like a two-minute introduction as to why North Andover is the right place for you, what you bring here, and then we'll ask you a series of questions, seven or eight questions, and then try to give you two minutes or so for wrap-up again within the forty-five minutes. Sound all right?
Sounds great.
Okay.
So for those who don't know me on camera or whatever, I'm Dr. Elizabeth Zalinski, most people just call me Dr. Liz. And I've been a public school educator for about twenty-eight years. In that time, I've held multiple positions. Currently, I am the superintendent of schools in the King Philip Regional School District, which is a seventh through twelve regional for the towns of Norfolk, Plainville, and Rentham, Mass. Prior to that, I had the role of assistant superintendent at the Quaybog Regional School District. I also held the position of special education director and curriculum director in that district. I've worked for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education as a school support specialist for the city of Hoyoke. I have been a high school, alternative high school principal, I've been a vice principal, and I've also been a teacher. My favorite subjects are science and math, so I'll just put that right out there. So why I'm seeking a position is I'm really interested in going from where I am, which is seventh through twelve, have a wealth of knowledge and experience in elementary education, and I'm really looking to be able to find a district that's a match for my skill set, to look at a continuum of education for students pre-K through twelve. And I saw North Andover and I saw it as a potential opportunity, I didn't know too much about North Andover, but as we all do, we go on and we Google a little bit and got some information. And you were gracious enough to invite me in for a first round of interviews. I came in, I met with a wonderful group of the search committee and I really enjoyed that interview, especially one particular question was really good. So I really, really enjoyed it and I felt that it might be a good match. And so I was very pleased to hear that you have invited me back in. And today I learned a tremendous amount about your community. I learned it from the teachers, from the administrators, but also in the little brief I got snippets of students in the buildings where I was. And I think that my skill set may be a match. Going through the town and the community was very comfortable and looking at what you have here. What I think I can possibly bring to you is I'm a person who likes to take a look at where you are and move that forward. You have done a tremendous amount of work in this district. You have a thoughtful consolidated plan for improvement, but you have a lot of work that you are doing on your plate. And it's really about leading that to make sure that all those goals and objectives can be fulfilled. It's about working with the community, both in the schools, the staff, the administration, and the larger community of stakeholders, the town manager, the selectmen, as well as of course, the families in the community. And I think you really have a nice vision and I'd like to be able to work with you to take that vision to fulfillment and then plan for your future.
Thank you. So we're gonna ask the first question, which I think might be-
Might be me.
Okay.
No, it's you.
I, fourteen? Oh, I've written down your question at the bottom of my page one, Andrew, that's why.
So I'll go, I'll go.
Oh, sorry.
That's my fault.
I wrote on three.
I'm gonna go.
Okay.
So this was a question about how you use data to inform teaching and learning in your district. And what we'd like to, to have is an overview of your student testing data, your MCAS data, and what you've done as a superintendent to influence those results. And we'd really like to have some specific information about the middle school and high school if you can provide that.
Sure. When I came into the district at King Philip, they were a level three district as by the state, and that is of course assessed by the MCAS data. There were some areas that really were sticking points for them. One specific area was mathematics was very difficult at the middle school level, which didn't help much when you got to the high school, it was okay. English was a little bit better, they were making improvements, but really was math was really, really the hard piece. So we looked at the data, we also worked with data metrics, which you might know as TestWiz back in the day. And what we did is we developed some building-based or course-based assessments that we were able to work with them to analyze those particular data points through that system and link it to and correlate it with MCAS data to see if what MCAS is showing versus what our own testing developed was leading to. We found that there were some specific points and areas that needed a little bit more attention. And we also found that we were looking at some demographic groups that I want to call, call it a bubble group, a group of students who were sort of on that cusp that weren't quite getting to that next level, so we were able to identify those students. We then looked at the structure of what was going on in the middle school and we took that and we, we organized some of those math classes to really go in and do some very strict targeting. Not a full, I want to call a double dip in mathematics, but for some kids maybe a half dip in order to get those pieces in and additional interventions and, and that, that one piece. On the same note, we also looked at our students, they were performing very well, and how do we take our kids that are performing well and push them to the next level? And so there was a variety of pieces that we put in for a lot of enrichment pieces. So that was one way that, that we did it. Another piece was within the structure. We have, if you want to call it a study, the middle school has teachers who sort of team together, but it runs sort of as a hybrid between a teaming model and what you might consider a traditional junior high school. So it was, what is built in there is a class called an SAT. It's sort of a study or directed study. And what we've done in the structure of the day is that groups of kids all have SAT by grade level around the same time. So as that happens, if these children need extra support and help, they go to the teacher and they can get that help while other kids may be working on other projects together or maybe an, specific for like reading and language arts, we have kids that go in for like an extra dip there. Or we also support our ELL students as an extra dip in, in that timeframe. So it is building wide that we were able to do that. Seventh and eighth grade run a different schedule, so we were able to maneuver that. But that was another thing that we did was to look at the structure and how can we use the structure we have to maximize the education and the learning time for students? But the main part of that is knowing the data on the kids and following it through. The teachers work in teams and look at the data because it's important for them to own their students' data, to know what those scores are, to know who is struggling in their classroom, and then to really help structure that, what they need to do and where they need to go. Because it depends on the kid, they may do well in one area, one section, but then when they get to something that's, you know, geometry based, for example, or slope and intercept, they're falling down, so we, we move them in there. I'll talk about another piece with data a little bit. The school, struggling, middle school, the high school math articulation, we were, I should go back, high school math articulation, we were developing so that the points of students going in went all the way up through high school, so that they're getting what they needed. And kids who needed more additional help or support, we're still sort of doing an Algebra I at freshman level where a majority of our kids are going immediately into geometry or are already in Algebra II when they enter high school, depending on where they're falling in there.
Thank you, I think probably that's enough to get us an overview. I'm sure there's much more you can share with us, but I know there's many questions.
That was me, by the way.
Yeah.
And so, I know it's hard to suck on that, but if you're- You want me to go next?
Sure.
Okay. So what are some of the criteria that you would use in recruiting and hiring a principal? And how do you probe with candidates to determine if they will have what it takes to be a successful leader in a school?
So when you're looking for a principal, and I've done a couple of these, there's a couple pieces that you have to remember. The hiring of a principal is the hiring of a very visible position that is a community position. And it is very important that the community be involved in the process, from taking a view and looking at potential candidates who may apply, also defining what those, what your qualifications are you looking for. But in looking at that and getting very clear feedback from that search, the search committee. What I've done with hiring of principals is it's not just that interview process, the first one and coming in a second time. We have had our principals, candidates come in and we also have them spend a day in the building. And on that site visit, going through classrooms, is myself, but I also have a school committee member with me. And that's sort of an outside observer. And so I try to engage in dialogue with the principal about, because it's only a snapshot in time, what are you seeing, what are you hearing? And you try to engage, you know, what kind of advice would you give this particular teacher or where would you particularly see improvements or what are you viewing or what, those kinds of pieces? And it's really important because how the potential administrator speaks and addresses with the superintendent is one level, the next level is they have to be able to speak and address with the community. It's important that there be focus groups to meet with, with the candidate, including students are really essential. And even students at an elementary level are essential because they give you feedback and maybe having lunch with a potential candidate with some other adults to see how they engage with those students. And working with the parents, so the parents come in. So it is a community effort in looking at all those pieces and that's sort of level one. Level two then becomes how does that candidate interact with the other administrators in the district? So usually you want to have them come back in and meet with the administrative team, talk about their vision, their view, data information they know about the school, and to see how they interact with the rest of the administrative team, because that's really important, because you have to work collaborative together. And then you meet with them one-on-one to find out, you know, how is this, how is this relationship, where do they see themselves? And to make a recommendation for appointment. So, and then again, you make the recommendation. And of course, at different points, school committee members really need, because you have a feel for the, if you feel for the community also, should come in on some of those community evenings and such. But really, it's all that whole community piece, you have to feel it out and you have to see how they interact at all those levels. And you have to make a judgment of the type of person that you're looking to put in your building. What are the current needs of that building? Is it an issue where you need someone who's going to be very strong, really know the curriculum piece, or someone who really has a really strong review on discipline or policy or due process, are there issues? What is that right fit? For the moment is important, but you have to look down the line of where you see that school going once, if there's a blip or there's issues or concerns that have to go on.
Great, thank you.
Hypothetically, you've identified an administrator who needs improvement. What process would you use to improve the competence of the person and what corrective action would you take?
Okay. So every administrator from the superintendent down and every teacher, always, there's always room and growth for improvement. If you're talking about situations where there's something very specific. So an administrator, for example, sometimes it can be either, I'm gonna use the word too patient, or sometimes an administrator can be, I want to call knee-jerk reaction. And I'll take the knee-jerk reaction because I've dealt with different people. So an administrator who is conscientious, wants to do the best job possible, and feels the need that they have to respond immediately to everybody. And when that happens and that need or desire to respond, it'll be that quick email. Well, that quick email is being received by maybe a parent and they don't understand or they hear a tone in an email. And that's a problem because people read things into it and then it creates, well, they didn't respond to me, then it didn't give me the information I needed. You know, you, you get that kind of a complaint. So in talking, you work with an administrator about, look, you need to slow it down, think through, and process, and use your resources. And you have those dialogues with that individual. If it's something that continuously arises, it can become a problem in their leadership. If this is something that, you know, some people will say, teachers say, well, you know, you know, we know, we know what he's like and it's okay, we get it. But parents may not know because they're upset about something and they want a response that is much more thorough. For example, in email, because it is a great tool to use. So you have to sit with them, respond to them, and then when it comes time to disciplining or, I don't want to use the word disciplining, but if you need to reprimand a principal, I have done that. And you do it in writing. And again, I look at it more like coaching. You know, this is not the beginning and the end, but you know, we've talked about it, we've, I, we've, we've talked about it, we've asked you, asked you to do some things, but it hasn't really improved to the degree it should improve. So I need to put you on warning, I don't want to necessarily do this, but you need to be on warning. Because this is something that is really going to affect you, is going to affect your valuation, because it's an area of growth and improvement. And it really is setting goals. And if someone doesn't have a particular skill set and they haven't developed it for some reason or are stuck, you need to provide them the supports to develop that. And it may be some type of professional development or other. And the other piece is depending on the principal or experience, there's nothing better than having a mentor for a principal. And I really believe that. I've hired principals and I usually have a mentor for them for the first year when they come in. And the role of the mentor is not a person who communicates with me directly, it's someone where they can go to and problem solve with. And then, you know, you will speak to the mentor and say, well, they're doing really well, from my perspective, here's some areas that may need some improvement, you may want to talk with them about it, but it may not be what that principal needs and the mentor's doing right now, so it's kind of this relationship. It's not evaluatory at all, but it's really to help them improve and move forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't know where you had your-
I can go and-
Why don't you do that question? Because I wrote on page one.
So King Philip currently is a seventh to twelve grade district. North Andover is pre-K all the way to twelve, so early childhood, we have five elementary schools, we have a middle school, we have the high school. We're significantly a larger district than what you do from a faculty, from a student, from all of those perspectives. So I'm wondering if you can give us a little bit of insight into what you envision your entry plan to be and how do you look at taking your experience at the middle to high school levels and really help formulate that into the North Andover education from pre-K to twelve?
Okay. So let me do-
There's a lot in there.
So I'm gonna sort of separate the two out, so I'll check it. So I'll do entry plan after. So what's probably not reflected in my resume is I talked about my work with DESI in the city of Hoyoke as a school support specialist. What I was was an assistant to the superintendent and Hoyoke is about the same size. I was charged with seven elementary schools, alternative school, two middle schools and two high schools. And my role was to work with the administrators of those schools, develop a school improvement plan for those schools. But part of it was because they were underperforming, I was in those buildings a tremendous amount, working with teachers, working with the staffs to get them to look at where they're at, where, why they're at that place and then to plan for improvement. So as far as the size goes, I'm used to working in larger districts. I also was a principal in Chickaby, which, you know, they're about the same as Chickaby, Hoyoke, same size. So in, in that, what you do is you balance your work among all buildings and all principals. So it's at various different levels. So you need to go in and understand and work with the building principals and talk with them really about the building, what's going on, where they see improvements, where they have needs and that kind of conversation within those buildings. When the administrative team comes together on a regular basis, you really want to quickly go through what are the hot topics and what's really going on in your building and what your needs are. Because even though you have this significant number of elementary schools, each building has its own culture and its own personality. And you don't necessarily want all the, you want the curriculum to be consistent, you want to build the best teachers you have, the best skill sets, but you don't want to make every school a cookie cutter of each other. What you really want to do is to bring them together so they can talk and problem solve together about what's going on and what's working and to help get ideas off of each other in that process. So that as the kids go through the system, all the way, all the way up. With that, in working with your administrative team in the buildings, as a superintendent, you need to be in the buildings. And even with what I do now, I, you call them walkthroughs, there's all different kinds of names, I walk through buildings with my building principals or the vice principals. And we walk through and we look at things and we talk about staff in ways that, considering a new staff, just someone who's more experienced, maybe trying a new project or something, what's going on, what's working, how is that going, this is really great, we need to highlight this, we need to get some- This is really great, we need to highlight this, we need to get some other eyes on this to showcase this or that. Or this teacher is struggling, why are they struggling? What other supports do we need to put in for this particular teacher? And that's sort of walkthrough. I do not, I don't do direct observations of staff and write them up or evaluate them. That is the role of the principal. But I walk with my administrative team to look at teaching and learning. Then sometimes I just walk around myself and I pop in classrooms and I talk to kids, you know. I don't want to just walk to classroom, but stand in the back and when they get, you know, engaged in something, so, you know, what are you doing? What are you doing? Why are you doing? Oh, how do you like this project? And you get a glimpse of what's going on. So you have a, I don't have as great an idea, I have a small just, but as, you know, the principals know where their core pieces are, but I have a much wider view of what's going on in the buildings and how we can connect. Because believe it or not, even with a district of two schools, a middle and a high school, there's a lot of, you have to do that articulation, you have to talk about that, you have to calibrate together. So when we do observations and evaluations, is there something specific initiative in the district from professional development that we want to make sure that we're hitting and we comment on so that we're consistent in our evaluations and calibrate those pieces? It's very important. Entry plan.
Yes.
The most important part of an entry plan is that someone new coming in, the number one thing is, you know, if you say you have two ears and one mouth, is that you listen. And you need to go around to all the constituents and you need to go to your buildings and you need to meet with families. And you have those things set up. One of the things that was done when last time I came in is that parents would sponsor coffees in their own neighborhood. And I would go to their homes and we'd talk about their kids and we'd talk about what they see and what their vision is. You need to be out there, you need to be out there to meet and greet within the town businesses, to introduce yourself. I mean, you, I, I've heard about the Pasta Knights. And I've heard, you know, and then you have a business that really does a lot of that sponsoring. You need to really be thankful for that because not a lot of communities have that. And so you need to go out to the businesses and you want to talk with them, you want to meet your selectmen. You know, I met the town manager very graciously, met me today. And have those conversations about what's going on and make those connections. You also want to speak with your state rep and your state senator. Because I've found that that is a very important link and connection in order to really be successful and to make sure that you can get out there and get your vision out there, but also get your needs out there. What you're needing. One district may not be a big enough voice, but when they hear you enough, there's a level of respect and due diligence that when you call there's something that might be important that they need to pay attention to. So you develop those outside relationships as well as the relationships within, you know, meeting with parents and students. It's really important to meet with kids. They have, they have a wealth of knowledge that you don't know. You know, sitting down with them, a lunch bunch or something going in, they'll let you know what they like and what they don't like.
Yes, they do.
Absolutely do. And, and, and it's funny because sometimes, you know, you may be with a principal and you're with a group of kids doing this, and they'll complain about something and the principal's like, I don't know that, you know. Because, not that they're not listening, but it's just a different opportunity and a different view and different questions that are asked, so that's... So it's really about listening. Looking at your strategic plan is essential. Seeing where you're at, where the next steps are, where the, maybe the yellow lights versus the red lights are, and if they're sticking points and how do you problem solve to get around those or to move forward with that? Because you really have a great plan. A lot of work went into that. And you're totally on the right track with that to get things in place and keep moving forward towards excellence.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I feel like a follow-up to that.
Okay, good.
If it's all right, but I can wait.
Ask the chair.
Can I ask a follow-up or should we let go? Okay. So, so I really think a follow-up, I mean, you've talked generally about entry plans. There's going to be a lot going on, on July 1st in North Andover. A new building is coming online, we'll have a new principal at the middle school, we'll have two principals who are just finishing their freshman year, one in the elementary level, one at the high school level. What specific supports or what specific actions would you take around all those, you know, really important things that will be going on in North Andover?
Well, I think one of the first things is although the start is July 1, I think that there needs to be some time before really to do some, to get in, to do some cross-training, cross-talking with Dr. Frank Chris. Excuse me, I'm sorry. We're sorry. It's okay. It's all good, it'll be fine. To look at that and to come in and really get a sense and a feel of everything, I think the building project is essential because you want to make sure that that is done on time. You want to get in to get, to get in to get to know the staff a little more, to be more visible and to hear what's going on and to afford that time before just July 1. Because the truth is, the activities of the school end around Ju-, the real active, end around June, you need to be, need to be there before that so that when you come into July, it's like, okay, here's, here's where we're at, this is where we're going, we're on target, we're not on target here, and work with the administration team, next steps, let's move forward with that. So, you know, you meet and greet within the community is important for people to get to know you. But the work that's going on with that strategic plan has to be very thoughtful and it's almost like a mini-plan layered on it. What are the dates that you need to hit certain things when you have to meet certain people? Make sure projects are done or balance and look at those. But you really need to be in before that to have that transition.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My turn?
Go to turn.
Dr., as we haven't met yet, I'm David Turisi.
Hi.
Hi, how you doing? Thanks for coming today.
I don't usually sound like this, just...
That's okay, I believe it, I believe it. So I've been on the school committee for a little over three years now. Before that, a long-time elected official, lived in town my entire life. Doesn't make me a townie, you have to be, by click, three generations to be a townie here. But I do, I have two kids in the school system. So as a community leader and a parent, this is a very important exercise for me to go through. I guess, I got to go off script really quickly of this, I need to ask this question. You were said in your opening remarks, you were asked a question during...
She was asked a question.
She was asked a question, yes. What was the question and why did it get you excited?
Oh, the question, okay, so, it's a question that often is asked, you know, three things that your, you know, people that would support you would ask you and three things that people who didn't support you would ask you. It was really the way that the question was framed, that it just made you think, it was very visual. So you're in a room. And it's all the people you've ever supervised and I'm like, that's a lot of people. And I'm seeing faces of people and your supporters are on one side and your detractors on the, you know, the other. What three things would they say? And I literally, I'm like, I can name those people, like I could see them. It was, it was just, so that was, it was just the way it was framed, it was really done very well. And it really shows that there was a lot of thought that went into that question about how do you get at that? How do you, you know, how do you get to the core of that? So I just, I was an excellent question and I actually went back to my district and I told all my administrators about it. I said, we have to put this on our, you know.
The person who asked it is in the room tonight.
Yeah, she is in the room.
Yes, there are probably a lot more supporters on...
Right. And we should reveal that we used a version of that question with all the reference checks and all that and it's very useful.
That's great.
It's a great question.
So I was former to the chair last term and one of my big assignments last year working with Mr. McDevitt was going and doing our teachers' union contract. It was a very long, arduous process, but I can't tell you what it did for me personally. And I think we just have a great relationship between our school committee and administrators and our teachers' union. I wondered if you could just talk to your relationship in, in King Philip or in past jobs, your relationship with the teachers' union and how did you, you know, work as not only a supervisor, but I always find educators are always educators and you're kind of a peer at the same time. So how do you balance those two things?
Okay, so I'll let you know what it was like when I came into King Philip. The relationship between the school committee and the teachers' union was not healthy at all. They actually were without a contract for the past two years and the school committee had filed a strike petition against the teachers and that's what I walked into. So, talk about having to work. I think one of the essential pieces is that people were talking at each other, but were not listening to each other. And it was on both sides of the table. Everyone had their heels dug in a little bit and that's what happens. So by working with the school committee, there was specifically one area that, you might use the word term hurtful, the teachers would use the term hurtful, unprofessional, that the school committee had enacted. The contract in King Philip is the only one in the state where a teacher does not automatically get a lane change, it has to be voted by the school committee. And so teachers have gone back to get their master's degrees and have paid for higher education to improve their skill set, et cetera. The school committee decided not to vote lane changes for these teachers who had gone back and that, you know, were expecting that as part of the typical step in salary scale. So I did a lot of work. I talked to the school committee about mutual respect, understanding the nature of teachers. Because at that time, I don't believe there were any teachers or anyone who had been in, you know, on that school committee. And so I was able to get them to move to vote the lane changes in, which allowed for the conversations then to move forward at the table. And we had gone through mediation and all that, but that went to the side, came back to the table. And I settled that contract in about my sixth month when I was in the, the district. I've since settled to, well, that settled the last two years and that year I still had to come back for another year of contract, then following year we had to do another negotiation. I think I've settled three teachers' contracts and all the other contracts. And a lot of it is just really talking about what is reasonable and rational and what the needs are. Because in contract negotiations, it's, in many instances, it's a money issue, a funding issue, but it's also a language issue. And all the language in a contract has a dollar value to it. And so you have to weigh and look at that, what, what is that value and what is it that you want? You do IBB here, which is not...
Yes, we did.
Which is, which is not what King Philip has done or does or looks to do. That's, there's been a lot of growth in the relationship between the administration and the teachers' union. And I think with the school committee, it's improved, but I'm not sure it's at that level of trust, which is what the issue is. Is how do you develop and grow trust among all the stakeholders? Because when trust is, when trust is broken, you lose everything, you lose momentum. The same thing, a parent entrusts us with their child and they expect us to love their child as much as they love them. And they trust us to give them the very best education. And that is the community trust and the importance of public education. And we need to do that for all of our students. The same is true for our staff, that they trust, that the work that they do is recognized and is understood as hard work and that it is appreciated. And so when you go into contract negotiations, it's really about expressing that we're negotiating a contract as professionals, we're negotiating this because you trust in our skills, you provide for us with professional development. And when you do this for us, we are going to give you the very best that we have every day for all of our kids. So IBB is a long process. It's really about being open and honest, putting things forward that you can share, some ridiculous ideas and some really good ideas, I've heard. But in the end, you come to an agreement that is worthy of both sides and agreement that everyone feels keeps the level of trust, the honesty, and the relationship of, yes, you're being paid a salary, but that salary has more to do with how good you are and what you do in a classroom to help our students grow and improve.
So it's a regional school district, how many, how many towns are in there? What towns are in there?
We have three towns, Norfolk, Grantham, and Plainville. Each town maintains its own elementary school district. Each town has its own set of curriculum. So when the three towns come together at the middle school, they're coming from three different curriculum backgrounds and we work with that and move forward.
That's a different dynamic.
And that's all, and that's also three select boards...
Yeah.
Three FinCom boards, three budgets that are developed.
We'll go with one here. We have a great relationship with all those boards. Could I ask my follow, my, not a follow-up question, my different question?
Yes.
Do people, things we don't follow?
No, go ahead.
So the other major project that I've been focused on is I'm chairing the school building committee. And Helen kind of touched on a little bit and we got a question from, this is from a parent who also...
Who's here?
Who's here? Okay, great. So I'm going to kind of, it's going to be a kind of a hybrid question. So we're doing this kindergarten building right now. We're very close to, you know, signing a contract to get that, that rolling. But we really have another project coming, hopefully coming right online after that, the, the middle school. So we'll work with that process of designing and kind of build that addition. How do you think the best way to handle the current problem that we have at the middle school of overcrowding and inferior facilities? How do we bridge that from where we are today to hopefully where we're going to be in three, four, five years when we get that new building done?
Ambition.
Yep. So one of the, it's, it's a difficult challenge and I've been in districts that handle things in different ways. So I don't know if, you know, when I was in West Springfield, they ran out of room in the elementary schools. And what they ended up doing is they moved all the sixth graders into a wing of the high school. And they were there for five years until they could get their middle school built and up and running. And it became its own separate school, that piece. That was a solution. You have a space issue, that's an ongoing space issue, while at the same time, you're looking at creating an environment of smaller class, smaller class sizes, which you're developing with your, your kindergarten, early childhood center, so that that piece or that is, you're going to try to move that through. So when you look at the middle school, I think you really need to think about how are you going to balance it? Is there a way of looking at your current space in different ways? And it's never ideal, but larger spaces, can they be used and divided per, say, I don't have the layout of your school, but take out your auditorium space. No one wants to have a class in the auditorium, but it might be a way to bridge in some instances a possible space. You know, you have the option of looking at, I know that you have your schedules, is there a way that we have to restructure the schedule for a temporary time being so that we can bridge this? Is there a way of doing that? In some places, and at the middle school, it has never been done, so I'm not saying I recommend it, you look almost at a staggered schedule between one group of kids coming in at one time with teachers and another group of kids. So your students get their full day, but you've been able to schedule and stagger that schedule, so it's almost like a double session. I mean, there's different ways, but you have to really look at all those and what makes the most sense for the community and what really is going to work. There are no easy or ready solutions. And you really need to talk with the building committee to see about what they've investigated and what they've looked at so far to see what might work.
Have you had any experience dealing with any kind of school construction or remodeling in your vast background?
Oh, yeah. So I would, I will be honest with you, have I, well, so, okay. I have been involved in building construction at different points, but never the construction of a whole new building from start to finish. But expansions, wings, and things from, and it would recall the old way, when the architect would come in and say, what do you want your learning space to look like from that ground floor up to now where, although it's changed a bit, it's like, oh, a new building. You get building A, building B, or building C, you have 500 more, which side would you like your wing on, the right or the left, but the state? So I've been a part of that. I did a lot of construction, really where I am, some construction. One of the pieces was the, the septic system, which may sound unusual, but we have a wastewater treatment plant that I had to dismantle and build a septic system. Because when the building was originally renovated, before I got there, the architect said you don't need a wastewater treatment plant. But they couldn't get the permits from the town because they... But they couldn't get the permits from the town because they insisted that they revitalize the wastewater treatment plant. And that dealt with a lot of sewer issues, and also that, when you do that, the town has a right then to hook up into that if they want to run sewers. So, there was a lot of that kind of stuff going on. So, we built that. I also put, installed a turf field for the district, and that was also with private fundraising, bonding, and I was able to secure $100,000 in the governor's budget to help fund the turf field. Didn't know that, did you? Remember, I talked about state reps and senators? So, some of those pieces and those linkages. So, I've done some of that. The building projects were in play, had already been revised when I was, when it came to KP, but we did refinance also, familiar with financing and bonding, the project so that we saved about, I think, and it's like two or three million dollars we're saving when we refinanced at the 10-year mark, because you have to be to the 10-year mark. And then we bonded a short-term, three-year, short-term, three-year bond on the turf field. So, but the construction, I know really an awful, awful lot about sewers.
I know the town manager's struggling with that issue right now, so maybe you could assist him, but thank you very much, and thank you for spending time with us today.
So, we're at the perfect spot. If you'd like to give us a little wrap-up of your candidacy, we'd love to hear it.
Well, again, I want to thank you, the school committee, the search committee, for really affording me this opportunity to come here and speak with you, with the little voice that I do have. You know, when you look out and you throw your hat in the ring for a district, you do a little research, but it's not till you really get here, get a feel for the community, to see what you have. North Andover is a fantastic community. You have a little bit of everything from your, what you call the rural section, which is not as rural as where I'm from, but that's okay.
We can attest to that from yesterday.
No, you went for that visit, the rural section, to down where the mills are and the revitalization that's gone on downtown. You have almost a perfect balance in the community, and you have schools that are reflecting that balance and schools reflecting a change of a very vibrant, diverse community. And that really is what I'm very much attracted to beside being K-12, is that you really have a lot of diversity, and that really speaks to me. I find that in my meeting with the teachers today, especially a lot of the elementary teachers came out, and one came out that from sergeant's school, they were very proud that she came all the way out, which to me wasn't that far, but came out, you know, they're really concerned about their kids, and they're concerned about what they're doing, and they take great pride in what they've accomplished, and I see that they really want to move forward. I know for some of them, the whole early childhood center, it's a new process and it's a little scary because it's change, but I think it's positive. Change can be good, it's always, change is always scary, but it's also good change, and it can really benefit the district in moving forward. In meeting, I met with some middle school people, and I actually got to interact a little bit with some of the middle school students who were very proud, you can tell, they're very proud of their school, and they're active, and I heard, I saw your ski team in one of the classrooms already working, I heard they rollerblade through town.
Actually, my daughter was there then, and they do rollerblade.
They do rollerblade through town. So, you know, I think that you have, you have such great, you have, you have great facilities here, even though you're struggling with the size, but I think you're thoughtful and planful in that, and the kids are fantastic, and the staff are, you know, they're lovely. And the search committee, I'm gonna tell you, you go in for the initial interview, you're, I came out and I'm like, they're just such lovely people, you know, and it felt very, it felt like home. And so, that's the sense that I got. So, you know, I know you have to deliberate, and you have to think about who you think is the right fit and the best fit for your community, and that's a heavy decision on your part, because it's important that you make that right match to get you from where you are to the next place. You've had excellent leadership in place, and I know you're feeling the loss of her leaving, and in my conversation with her today, I think she's feeling the loss too, you know, but it's, it's things to change. So, I hope that I've presented to you someone who has a skill set, some experience in the role superintendent, and who can help you work together to move the district to the next level, because you have everything to be probably one of the top districts in the state, and there's no question about that. You just have, you know, it's really focusing that leadership piece and moving it forward.
Thank you very much, Dr. Liz. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming up here and all the time you spent.
I always send you a book.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Feel better.
Thank you.
Great meeting you.
To the audience, thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to take a five-minute break so we can...
I'm bored with that one.
Yeah, I'm gonna grab some water.
That, I have some in here.
Oh, do you?
So, stop in a break?
It's like old scratchy.
I know, was that you?
No.
Oh, that was good.
It was really good.
How are you?
I'm fine going up.
Okay.
I think I'm up first this time.
So, our next candidate, Mr. Mealy is gonna bring in Mr. Gilligan in just a moment. He was escorting Dr. Liz, so. Should be here momentarily. I forgot to ask Dr. Liz where she went for dinner.
Jamie's.
Jamie's. Thank you for the info.
They were debating Jamie's or the loft, so.
Good choice.
I think Jamie's, that's because we were going loft to Jamie's.
Yes, that was wise coordination, yes.
Did you go to the loft?
No, we went to Lofties.
Oh, nice for you. Nice for Greg.
Long commute.
Yeah.
Very good. So...
Is he still at Lofties? Is he still at Lofties?
No, no. I asked Jim Mealy to bring him in at 7:30, and I already said it a little before, but he, Dr. Liz had her person in Jim's office, so he, you know, making the transition, so.
They don't allow to cross paths, is that the...
Well, they certainly can, but, you know, trying to keep it all straight. Yes. I don't know if anybody wants to go look for Jim Mealy. So...
It's nice to have a minute to collect thoughts.
Yes, it is.
Good, Dave.
I don't know, maybe some entrance music, like, you know, basketball?
I give you guys instant results.
Oh, very nice. We are ready. Welcome, Mr. Gilligan.
Thank you.
That's the seat for you.
That's a water for you, and those are some candies if you get a tickle in your throat. So, welcome. We thought we'd give you a little overview of the plan, so we'd like to invite you to give a two-minute introduction, and then the whole interview is about 45 minutes, we have about seven or eight questions, about eight, and then we'd love to have you give us a little summary, a wrap-up.
Great.
Makes sense?
Terrific.
All right, so go right ahead with your intro.
All right. Well, my name's Greg Gilligan, I'm in my sixth year here in North Andover as the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and I'm in my 23rd year of education, which has spanned a lot of different levels, I was thinking about it today. I actually started out as a one-on-one teacher's aide, teaching assistant, for a student who receives special education services at a middle school. And then I had moved on to it as a night school teacher, and a high school history teacher, high school vice principal, elementary principal, and now six years in central office. So, it's been a little unique in the sense of a lot of folks have experience at one level or the other, and it's been nice to see all those different levels. Secondly, I have two children that attend the district. My son is at the Thompson School, my daughter's at NAMs. My wife is also a professional educator, she's the head of guidance at the Lawrence Public Schools, and I think the number one thing that you need to know about me is that I have an unwavering belief that all students deserve equal access to an excellent education, and that's what drives things forward. Here in North Andover, we have a strategic plan that has been set up for five years, and I think we've finally got some traction and momentum with that strategic plan, and there's some really terrific things happening, and I'd like to be superintendent of schools to shepherd us through that process and continue to move the needle. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, I think I have the first question. You've been a part of this district for 20 years, and you've formed many friendships. How will you make and manage difficult personnel and administrative decisions involving longtime colleagues and friends?
It's an interesting question and a good question. It's interesting, sometimes I wonder if I'd be in the same district still all these years if I hadn't had the opportunity to do things completely different, like leave the high school and go to the Thompson School, or leave the Thompson and come to central office. I think that we have the systems and structures in place here in North Andover, and I think that my unwavering belief, and I think it's the belief of the principals and everyone else, that we want to do what's best for kids, and all kids, and all students here in town. And having said that, oftentimes, that may take working with difficult cases. And not to get into the specifics, but over that time, 14 years as a leader in the district, I've had to work with some tough cases. And I think at the end of the day, when you say to yourself, what is best for students, what is best for our kids, then that makes it easier to make difficult decisions. I think the other thing too is I think it's a real mind shift that we've shifted here in this district around more of a growth mindset. I think one of the things I know I've grown tremendously, particularly in the last six years, is I've become much more reflective about my practice and who I am as an individual. And people talk about Carol Dweck and talk about a growth mindset, but it's hard to get feedback without taking it personally. And I think in the leadership roles I've had over the years, I've done a fair job giving feedback to people in a constructive way that is also supportive, but also holding people accountable. And, you know, I can tell you, it's easy to say you have a growth mindset, but when you get feedback that might be hard to hear, sometimes that's a little harder because people can get defensive. So, number one is always do what's best for kids, and if you do that, you'll be in good shape.
Thank you. So, my question is, if you were to become superintendent of North Andover Public Schools, how would you go about identifying your replacement for the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning? And how would you support this person to make the role his or her own?
That's a really good question. Thank you. I think one thing that I've always done well is build a team, and I think in the sense of building a team, you have to... And I think in the sense of building a team, you have to look at trying to get the best and the brightest, number one, but then, secondly, the other big piece is the fit. And you might say, "Well, what do you mean by fit?" Fit means you've got to look at the current team we have, and I think we have a strong team, but you have to look at what people's strengths are on teams and what are not strengths. I know that I need to look at my strengths and look at some of my weaknesses, and I'd want to hire an individual that, you know, I compliment them. I may have strengths that they don't have, and they may bolster areas that I need growth in. I mean, there's all areas that we can all grow, but it would have to be someone that's passionate about our core values in North Andover. It would have to be someone that's knowledgeable and passionate about curriculum and implementation of rigorous and consistent curriculum. And then it would be really about finding that fit. You know, I've really enjoyed working with Dr. Price, but that's really been in the role of his Assistant Superintendent, so it would be much different in that role as superintendent, and she inherited me. You know, but this would be an opportunity to try to improve our team here at central office, because I strongly believe central office, our job's customer service, and our customers are the principals, the teachers, and the families in North Andover. And I need the best team here at central office who can give feedback, pushback, different ideas, different strengths, so that we can best serve our constituency.
Excellent, thank you.
Can I go next?
You may.
It actually kind of piggybacks a little bit. So, obviously, you've been here for a number of years, different principals, superintendents that you've all worked for, most recently, two direct reports to superintendents. So, you've seen a lot of leadership styles, a lot of ways in which they assess the district and evaluate kind of where we are. You looking now as the man, as the potential to be the man in charge, what's our gap? And how do we fix that? What do you see?
Okay. Another really good question, a thoughtful question. Yeah, so in my 14 years as an administrator in North Andover, I think I've worked under eight superintendents.
I wasn't going to count them, but. It's a lot.
And that's interesting, because this question came up today, and I will get to your question about the gap, but it came up today about, "What have you learned from the best?" I've learned from some really terrific folks, but I've also learned some things probably not to do from other people. So, it's an interesting learning experience. Make no mistake about it, Dr. Price is a transformational leader, and our core values aligned, and I think that's why we were able to work in sync. I think in terms of identifying a gap, I think that we have a few areas we've got to tackle. But at the same time, as I said to a group of teachers today, we can't do everything at once. I've seen people try to do that. You know, "We have to tackle this, we have to be methodical, we have to be deliberate, and we have to be thoughtful about our plans." And I think that's what the five-year strategic plan does, and I also think that's what the five-year curriculum plan does. Having said that, there's certain areas within that plan that are up for action next year. You know, we definitely have a lot of work to do with English language learners. That's an area, you know, we have, we service 100 kids that speak 20 different languages here in this district. So, examples like that from the specific strategic plan, but there's no doubt about it, it's an area that we're growing, it's an area where we've made some progress, but social-emotional learning, for example, and teaching all students. You guys had a really good performance task you asked the candidates to do.
Correct.
And I think I wrote quite a bit about inclusion and some of the statistics around inclusion, but, you know, social-emotional learning is, and as you know, social-emotional learning disabilities are something that are on the rise, people say, not just in North Andover, but across the Commonwealth. One of the things that's a little bit of a pet peeve of mine, and when people talk about social-emotional learning, they think just special education. Social-emotional learning is about all students, but it's also about how do we best build capacity on our staff to not only serve all students, but also the students who receive special education services. So, it's an area that we've got to tackle. It's an area that we're doing quite a bit of work on. The district's, in addition to social-emotional learning and All Students Initiative is part of the plan, there's been a real look this year at special education programming and clear exit and entry criteria. And I think we're in the growth stages of that. I think that the Student Services Team, we've made a lot of progress, and, you know, there's always a few bumps in the road when you start something. I mean, it was no surprise when we, at the end of the summer, we had two, three long time administrators leave, and we had to make some changes quickly. So, there's going to be growth opportunities, you know, but at the same time, we have to do the best we can because our kids are coming. So, those are areas, you know, that I think we're growing, and I think particularly in the, you know, the social-emotional area, and the more we can connect that to RACE, because I think RACE is an area that's pretty special. That's what makes North Andover special, in my opinion. We're on the 10th year anniversary of RACE, so someone asked me about, "Well, what is RACE?", you know. The other day, someone from the state came out about hashtag leading the nation. They're honoring 70 districts in the Commonwealth, and they picked North Andover, and they wanted to talk about MCAS. And I was with Dr. Price, and we were thinking and talking to this person, you know, "We're leading the nation, yet you have, you know, as you know, the presentation with 50% of the kids in grade three through eight not meeting expectation." And we said, "If you want to celebrate North Andover, you want to celebrate RACE. RACE, hashtag leading the nation. RACE is about unified basketball, where we have kids with uniforms and volunteer coaches playing Andover in Haverhill. RACE is about Veterans Day at Thompson honoring Sean Conway. RACE is about understanding our differences. RACE is about wrestling Olympics and Jack Perry and all these great things." And we have to continue to build, as part of that gap, other opportunities of implementing a social-emotional learning curriculum at all the schools, and that's the identified gap, as I started out to mention, because we have to teach that just like we teach math, English, science, et cetera. If that makes sense to you. Thank you.
You've already touched on this next question a little bit, but what have you learned being an assistant to two very different superintendents that you can now bring to this role?
A lot about myself. Learned a lot about myself in the last particularly six years. Being a principal is so much different than working in central office, and it was a hard transition for me, because being a principal, you're reactive, you're a doer, you're fixing things, you're trying to be proactive, but it's a busy day, and working for two very different styles. I think the one thing that I've learned is that superintendents don't always have all the answers. I think I've learned that you have to be reflective in this job and listen to all sides and try to get people that, a team around you and, you know, folks to work with that have different opinions. And I also have learned that when you work together, I mean, really work together, and, you know, superintendent would be a different role for me. People see me as the assistant superintendent. They see Dr. Price and I riding bikes around town. You know, I would be in a role as superintendent of the schools, and, you know, in that role, you have, I've learned that you can build a team and put something in place that's meaningful, like the strategic plan. Most districts have a strategic plan that's in a binder, it's collecting dust, it's, you know, somewhere else. I've been through a few strategic plans in North Andover, and the ability to be superintendent, not with just positional authority, but without that stop and start, there's always a stop and start with a change of leadership. I think that transition may be minimized due to my, the relational trust I have with other leaders in this district, and I think that would be of benefit to what I've learned most is this strategic plan that's thoughtful, that is spelled out, that we're going to do things methodically, deliberately, purposely, what's best for students is the way to go, because I've learned from other folks that you can't say yes to everybody, that we're going to do all this at once. It will not end well. Initiatives will, there'll be too many balls in the air, and it's too much to ask. We have terrific teachers in this district that always go the extra mile for kids, and I feel really lucky that we've been able to implement consistent and rigorous curriculum, but more importantly, support them with meaningful professional development, because those go together, and a lot of districts don't have that, and through some of the creative ways we've been working lately, we've been able to do that, so.
Thank you.
And back to the other, I've probably learned some other pieces of what not to do, and those are teachable moments, too. You know, just one last piece is, it's kind of like being the batter on deck. Every time I've ever had a position, I always look at the next person who's at the plate, for example, whether it was the principal, and I'd always think to myself, "Okay, if that was me, how would I tackle this?". And that's been really, I don't think I've ever even told anyone this, but I often go through those scenarios and think, "Oh, I might have done this differently, I might have done this differently, I might have done this the same. I might have done this, and it wouldn't have been a good answer." So, I've had the good fortune to become a vice principal at 31, principal at 34, you know, in this role, you know, before my 40s, and I've had a great opportunity, I've worked with great leaders, some really good leaders along the way and in other jobs that have really helped give me a good compass, like where do my core values point, and I know where they are.
Thanks.
So, this is a very interesting dynamic. Watching you, listening to you, I've known you for several years, both grew up in town, not the same age, obviously, but in my previous life as a state rep, I saw you at the Thompson School. I spent a lot of time at Thompson School because my former aide was the PTO president, so I went to a lot of Thompson School events. So, another part of this whole dynamic is interesting. I look behind you, and I see several principals, several central office staff, the team that you talked about earlier, building a team, and I do like this team behind you. You have been, for lack of, I guess, an analogy, you've been like the assistant coach for the last several years. You know, I think of, you know, Bill Belichick, who was the coach under Parcells at the Giants. His, you know, first foray after that, went to Cleveland, he bombed, pretty much. Then he came into the Pats, and obviously, he's had huge success. What makes you think now you are ready to be the Belichick of the Patriots and not the Belichick in Cleveland? Because you had an opportunity three years ago to apply for this job, and you chose not to at that time. So, why now?
That's a great question. And for my chaperone today, Kate O'Bell. I used a couple of sports analogies. She told me she was lost, so, and I never use sports analogies.
You got me thinking, you started going baseball on me, so. Just so they could flow, also.
Yeah, it's been flowing with me with the sports today, and I never use sports analogies. This is the first superintendency that I've applied for. Why now? I think what's important, you mentioned a good team here, you know, I mentioned momentum. That you come to a certain point in your life where, you know, I think when you're younger, you think you have more, you know more or have more answers than you probably do. You know, when you're a young administrator, oftentimes, I thought I knew better than teachers or other folks. So, I think I've grown in the sense of I've become much more reflective, but I also know what I don't know, and I'm also really skilled at other things. The timing works out well in the sense of I'm finishing my doctorate this year at Boston College, and that's taught me a lot about myself in that process, the ability to interact with people from all over New England and that cohort. I made a decision to apply when Jen broke the news to me as a result of, we have made a lot of progress in this district, we've got a lot of work to do, but we have the opportunity to do it now. We have pieces in place, systems and structures, and now we have to go out and execute. And everyone's got to become a head coach their first time. You know, when I was 23, I became one of the youngest offensive coordinators in the country at McAllister College as a football coach. And then when I was 31, I remember I became assistant principal at the high school, and just a year before, someone applied who was 41, I was like, "Who is that young guy thinking he can be an assistant principal?". Because I thought assistant principals, then, I used to think, you know, until the baby boomers retired, it was always someone who was like 55. And, not that that's old.
Good check, a good check. That wasn't I saying.
And so, everyone gets a job first. In my life, I've been, people have seen talent in me and put me in positions I never thought I'd be in. If I had my way, my passion was teaching. I think a teacher's second only to kids. I think that my skills, the team that we have here in North Andover, the momentum and traction that we've gained, I thought, who better to step into a role that people haven't seen me in yet? And it would be a different Greg Gilligan, because I wouldn't be the assistant superintendent anymore. But I don't want to see this work that we've done, and I don't want to see this district go backwards, lose momentum, slow down, because, you know, I've been through these transitions of eight people as a leader, and I've been to all the retreats. It takes time to build trust, it takes time to, it takes almost a year and a half for folks to even figure out who you are. And I think we have the opportunity, we have the support of parents, we have the support of school board, I mean, just the folks, the diversity of folks that were on the search committee that took their time out of their day, they have some, we all have the same thing in common as me, is I care about these schools, this school and North Andover Public Schools greatly. My kids attend these schools, I want to see us succeed. I think that North Andover could be off to great things, and I think we've made significant progress, and I want to continue to move the needle. I do not want to let up on the gas, and I think now's the time.
Thank you.
So, that's the, that's how I feel.
So, we've always experienced your passion during our school clean meetings, and it's obviously coming through right now, so, thank you.
So, I have some specific performance actionable items.
Sure.
That I'm hoping that you've thought a little bit about. So, our next superintendent is going to start on July 1st, and at that time, we'll have a new middle school principal, we'll have two principals who have just finished their freshman year, one at the high school, one at one of the elementary schools. We'll have a building project hopefully very well underway with an ambitious start date for the first of the year. There'll be a lot of transitions going on, and we'd really like to know how would you support all those things and your entry into the new position? How would you, what would you do? What would be your actions?
Well, I would have an entry plan, a comprehensive entry plan to meet with all the stakeholders, and I'd want to hear about North Andover, like I don't know anything about it, through their eyes, through their experiences. And I think it's also an opportunity to engage some folks that might not be engaged in school, and I really strive to do that. The component of a lot going on as superintendent, I don't think there's ever a time there's not a lot going on. Frankly, the opportunity, you know, I'll miss Dr. McQuade, but the opportunity to hire someone new is one of the most exciting things we can do. We have a very rigorous principal hiring process here in North Andover, and I think it's an attractive place to work, and I think there are people out there with the core values we have, so that's exciting. We have some exciting things happening at North Andover High School under new leadership. For example, it's the most collaboration I've seen from the high school, working with the middle school in a long time, and I'm looking forward to that to continue. We have a new principal out of the sergeant, and we have quite a bit happening out there and work being done, so that's exciting. In terms of the building, this question was a good question, it came up in the original interview, and, look, we have a lot of support in North Andover. I mean, there was a long time here where everyone said, "Oh, well, let's build a third fire station", you know, and nothing ever happened. But the relationship with the town and Andrew Mailer and Ray Santilli and folks who have a lot of experience with buildings, I mean, we've got quite a bit done, including this building here on the former side of Johnson High School. And the other key component is Jim Mealy is very skilled at the building piece. I think in order to manage everything, you have to also use your team to delegate, so I think I'd be involved because I like to know what's going on with the building. My worries about the building are more bigger picture. Do we have the right staffing for the building? Are we having the appropriate areas? Do we have the right specialists? Is it furnished properly? Like, I think about those logistics about what teachers and kids need, and I Like, I think about those logistics, about what teachers and kids need, and I think that's my strength. And I think in terms of a punch list, certainly I'd be involved, but I'd want Jim Mealy at my side. Jim's built a lot of places, and been part of it. Ray Santilli's done a ton of work on the municipal side, you know, so for me, I think tackling something like a new building is, I want to make sure that we have the right traffic flow. That's the one that comes up no matter where I go. I want to make sure we have it furnished, I want to make sure on that first day of occupancy for kids, that it's the best and most appropriate learning space for kids in that early childhood, some kindergarten building. So, there'll always be a lot going on as superintendent, that just comes with the territory, and I actually look at it as exciting.
So I'm gonna, thank you.
And if there's another part of that question I didn't get to, feel free to ask me.
That's okay, I'm gonna give you a follow-up, though. You talked about a rigorous process for hiring principals.
Sure.
So what I'd like to know, as in follow-up, is what criteria you would use in recruiting and hiring a principal? And how would you probe that candidate to determine if they have what it takes to be a successful leader in North Andover at that particular school?
Couple things. One is, you know, you'd obviously start with a screening committee and a search committee. And what I think's really critical is I think kids should be on all of these. And particularly at the middle school level and above, and I'm actually, I actually think there could be a component where you could have fifth grade, fourth or fifth graders on a search as well. I think that's critical. And that's something we've been doing, including more kids. But when a search committee narrows a few folks to forward ahead, I think it's very important to mirror a similar process as the one I faced today. I showed up to a room at the middle school, and it was awesome, because it told me a lot of parents care about this school. There was a lot of people that I would never picture being in the same room together. And they had awesome questions, and we were all there for the same thing, we want, we want to choose a leader that's best fit for North Andover. So that's exciting. So there'd be a process of a performance task, and for principal, probably the most important thing for me would probably be instructional rounds. I had the opportunity to take a couple members of the site visit through instructional rounds at the middle school, to talk about the things we look for, and the way we communicate that feedback to principals and schools. So I want to know, because a lot of people interview well, but what do you know, because our main job is to teach kids, we teach kids to learn. So there'd be a component where they met with staff, there'd be a component where they met with other administrators, there'd be a component where they obviously met with parents. The performance task would most definitely probably be instructional rounds. And I have to say, that rigorous component is really where you learn a lot about somebody, what they know. You know, in a parallel mode, or a parallel example, I had a principal last year, say, last spring, you know, we hired 46 new people in the district. I had a principal say to me, it's down to two teaching candidates, and I think I really want this one. And then they did the demo lesson, and guess what happened? The wheels fell off the one that, that principal thought they'd pick. So, you know, they have to have core values of raise, they have to go through that rigorous process, they have to be instructional leaders, and they also have to be reflective people that are willing to grow, and that's why we do the instructional rounds. I would say, okay, I am the teacher, now we're going to role play. And it's really hard, some people really struggle with this, well, what would be the feedback? And that tells you a lot about a person. You know, some could be overly critical of some of this, you really get a sense of whether they're coachable, or whether they have a growth mindset and they're willing to grow, because that shows through the comments that they have on teachers.
Thank you.
Yep.
Excellent.
Can I follow up?
Yes.
So obviously, in your current capacity, focused on curriculum. In the last few years, we brought in new curriculum, Eureka Math, Lucy Culkins. Can you talk about the process it took, and maybe how you use your team to come to the conclusion to go in that direction with those, maybe those two specific programs?
They, for example, I have to say that the Medicaid funding mechanism to be able to buy curricular resources for North Andover has made all the difference. And the ability to do that, you know, Dr. Price, Andrew Mailer, bringing that ahead, it really motivated me. I mean, I think I went to about 123 different houses to get signatures, because it's big money that we've never had. Having said that, you know, we didn't have any new money, and we desperately needed new elementary math curriculum. You couldn't even buy it from, I had to buy it from a third-party vendor, and it was going out of print. So at the same time, we started to work with the vendor on the latest updated version of it, and once the idea of the money coming in from Medicaid, we had an opportunity then to pilot, and we piloted, as you know, we piloted Hope Mifflin, we piloted Hope Math, Hope Mifflin Go Math, and Eureka. And we had lots of sessions to hear from people, how's it going with this? We had 32 Eureka, for example. Last January, we met with every teacher in the district to talk about some of the ups and downs. But really, your question was about how I use the team.
How do you come to that consensus to go in that direction?
To choose that program.
Some resistance to.
Yeah, there was certainly, like, one school was the only school probably not piloting it as much as others. At the end of the day, we sat around this room, and, and we've got, we got recommendations from teachers, we had surveys, we visited other towns. The bottom line is, the strategic plan says rigorous and consistent rigorous curriculum, the bottom line is that we said that the other one was nice, it has good bells and whistles, but it's not based on all the research, all the feedback, everything we've done. Everyone sitting around this table with feedback from the FCI's, everyone else, said, this is the most rigorous curriculum, and that's what we want to use to push our kids.
Thank you.
So, special education and inclusion, and making sure that, you know, we have students that are here within district has been obviously a big focus over the last bit, to make sure that kids kind of, you know, stay here, that we're providing the best opportunities for that. So I'm just curious if you can talk for a little bit about what you see in the future for special education here?
Another very good question. I think that, you know, as part of the performance task, I try to make it very clear that the more kids that we can educate in a least restrictive environment with inclusive practices, the better off it is for those students who receive special education services. In terms of programming, I think we're working really hard, as I mentioned earlier, to grow the capacity to deal with students that have socio-emotional learning disabilities. And I see us continuing that way, because we need to have programs to support kids, because I really believe that it's much better for students to go to school in their hometown than to get on a bus. Financially, you know, students deserve and should get the best education that is determined by their IEP. But at the same time, if we could build this capacity locally, it's not only better financially, it's better for the kids. So I think we need to continue to grow capacity. I think we need to continue to think about programming now. You know, moving into this new building is going to provide, you know, open spaces, this is the first step in decreasing class size, it's going to provide open spaces. The reality is with budget next year, we'll be looking at, you know, not backfilling the elementary classrooms, because we're going to have to open up a building. That being said, the benefit next year is more appropriate spaces for all sorts of learning, whether it's special education, EL learners, et cetera. So I think that's one piece. The other piece is, I think we need to look at, continue to look at our partnership with Andover and/or other places, because sometimes you just have a cohort that's too small-
Right.
...and students end up out. So I think that the more, you know, Massachusetts, New England education in particular is very provincial and parochial, you know, 351 cities and towns doing their own things, I think the more we can work with Andover and places like that is, is good. And then the other component is, besides building the appropriate programming, we have to figure out what we can do and do well, and what are some of the things that we really have to take a hard look at, that we do well or not do well. And we have to make sure, what I mean by that is, we have to evaluate some of these new programs that we have, to make sure that we're doing it well or working to get better. So you need some type of evaluation or customer to figure that piece out. But really smart folks from Harvard and everywhere else say, the more you can include kids in class, the better it is for them. When you talk about the other programming, I'd much rather have kids attending programming that meets their needs in North Andover, versus putting someone on a bus for an hour a day each way.
Right.
So that, that's a lot of work. I know it's just a couple examples, but there's a lot of work in there.
Yes.
And, you know, it's not to make those strides, you see that some of the out-of-district numbers coming down. But at the same time, it's not easy work, and it's not perfect overnight.
Great.
Thank you.
It's a process.
I'll jump in if nobody's ready. Tell us how you've worked directly with principals to generate improved student performance.
Good question, Helen. So I've been working with principals for some time now, that's one of my main jobs. And I think, you know, one of the interesting things is although MCAS has changed, and MCAS is just one snapshot in time, and it's changed, and there hasn't really been real MCAS since 2015. But I think working with principals and some really good examples would be working with Greg Landry at the Atkinson, or, you know, working with all of them, they were making some significant progress in percentile rank. It all depends on what you, you know, if you're talking about something like student performance like MCAS.
I think whatever you consider improved student performance, you know, what work have you done with principals that, that you've seen successes? How, how has that been generated?
Oh, even better. I think systemically working, I thought you were talking about MCAS standardized test, I really, I mean, systemically working with the IBB process and being part of negotiations two times now, the ability to get collaborative time in a systemic way across every elementary school, in a systemic way that they're going to look at work at the middle school and high school, it's, it's designed to happen and not by accident, or good luck, or what the schedule is. And I think my ability to work with principals on what is the, what are the important things to do during this collaboration time? What are the appropriate times to use protocols and look at student work? To A, to have iterative reliability around assessments, B, know what the expectations are, that everyone's on the same board and page. And more importantly, let's make sure that reading teachers and special educators and everyone else are at that table as well. I think that's been tremendous. I think the ability to have the coaches attend one of those meetings every five weeks, and at least hit every classroom in this elementary district every five weeks, has been awesome. I think my ability to be welcomed into the high school and work with the department heads, much-needed content area leadership in a school that size, and the ability to, you know, dissect some of their assessments, particularly around MCAS, and U was the early warning indicator system, it's been terrific, and I did the same at the middle school with what they call ACs. So I think, you know, the ability to work around those pieces. But I also think that the ability working with principals around implementing consistent rigorous curriculum, I think we've improved it, not just for me, but feedback they have as well. And we've worked collaboratively to put new curriculum in, because we want it to be systemic across all of North Andover, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I thought you had another question, do you not?
Well, I think we kind of talked a little bit about the school building stuff already. I mean, I agree, Jimmy Lee's great with the punch list stuff, I think we've kind of covered the school building stuff already.
So I have another one for you, then. So you've identified an administrator who needs improvement. What process would you use to improve the competence of that person, and what corrective action might you take?
Okay. Well, we have an evaluation system, and I would, I would utilize the evaluation system to take the appropriate steps. More importantly, we'd probably start with a meeting to find out what's going on, and get a sense of that. I think that as superintendent of schools, and someone who has to hold principals or administrators accountable, that certain, certain folks need more support, and in different ways. So I would want to identify, utilizing the evaluation system, what's the issues, what's causing the issues, get to like a root cause analysis, actually, what is it? Have some discussion around that, and then put a plan in place to say, this is how we're going to monitor it. This is the kind of, and, not just monitor it and have you work on a plan, but what do you need from central office? What do you need from the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, if it's a specific issue? So that we can make sure that we're providing that person with the appropriate support, so that they can, in good faith, make a change. And that really ties into that piece about not getting defensive, and being reflective in a growth mindset, and that's a really important quality to have in administrators. And that tells you a lot about people. Are they willing to work at it? Are they making the effort? You know, and for the most part, you know, administrators don't make it that far without, you know, some talent and skills. And, you know, I think that that support would be good. Ultimately, sometimes changes have to be made, and I've been involved in some tricky cases over the years in different roles, whether supervising teachers or supervising other folks. And at the end of the day, you have to ask, what is best for the students that we have today, tomorrow? They only get one shot at fourth grade, one shot at eighth grade, et cetera, so.
Excellent, thank you. I think we have time for one last question. If anybody has another one left. Or we can certainly, because we did start a little early, we could invite you to give your closing comments.
Well, first and foremost, I want to thank the search committee. I'm usually on the other side of these interviews, and I've done a lot of them over the years, and it's a lot of work. And it's a lot of late nights, and it's a lot of dots, and, you know, rankings and all that to put people ahead, and it really shows that there's a diverse group of people that care about North Andover. This is probably the most important decision that you guys have to make.
It is.
So thank you to, thank you to them. Thank you for having me here. In closing, what I'd like to say is, I think that, I'll go back to my unwavering belief that all students deserve equal access to an excellent education. We have the momentum and traction going. People would say, oh, Jen Price, those are tough shoes to fill, or clogs.
She's watching.
And I agree. You know, as a leader, you know, I think a lot of, all leaders have some type of presence or ego, but I've known in the last six years that she's, she's the superintendent of schools, I'm the assistant superintendent of schools, so my job is to A, do what's best for teachers, kids, principals, but also do whatever I can to help her be successful. And I wouldn't see this as filling those clogs or shoes. I see it more as a passing of the baton, so that we can keep momentum going, continue to implement consistent and rigorous curriculum at all levels, including my passion around science at the high school, and increased computer science opportunities, and opportunity to grow raise with social emotional learning, so that we have consistent program across all levels implemented with that. And I think we have the right team in place and the right people on the bus to, to do that. And there's a lot of challenges, we have some work to do, as we talked about tonight, but I'm ready for those challenges professionally. I believe I'm ready to take that lead, to be the superintendent of schools for North Andover, and I'm really humbled by this opportunity. And I'm really humbled by this opportunity and I thank you for having me here tonight.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gilligan. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
I just have to say, I'm amazed that you have done three of these interviews in one night. That must have been incredibly exhausting in the past. A lot of information here. So we have another opportunity for a public comment. That could be about any school business. And seeing none.
Give him a call, minutes.
Well, they all just kind of collect their thoughts.
Amy's quick on that trigger.
We haven't seen Mr. Olympic here in ages. You know, he's not so quick on his feet anymore.
That's never stopped you before, though.
That's right. For those of you at home, you can't see, but the gallery is pretty full tonight and we really appreciate everybody coming out. That's right. We do. Do any of my colleagues have any information they'd like to share or comments?
Middle School Play is coming up, The Music Man, 7th, 8th, 9th.
Very nice. Anybody else?
I just want to say, just the process we just went through, obviously we have two, I think, great candidates for the position. You know, and I want to thank Ms. Lynch and you, Madam Chair, for all the work you've done getting this. I know it's, it has been easy. I know the amount of time and effort, the emails that we've received are just, you know, a small microcosm of what you've actually done. And I know there's some members of the search committee in the audience. I want to thank them personally as well. You know, this is a situation we didn't expect to be in, you know, two months ago. Kind of fell in our laps, to speak. But I think you've handled it in particular very, very well. So I thank you for your leadership on it.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just really would like to thank the subcommittee for their time as well. I mean, I think to narrow down the pool, I think, you know, there was a couple dozen people who applied. And to bring it down to where we are today, I think was great. So thank you. Look forward to Monday.
That's right. That's what I wanted to, unless you have other comments?
No, I mean, I would echo, I would echo my gratitude as well. And it's really been, these are two excellent candidates and it's very exciting to have, to have the opportunity to discern and think about this and all that work is really tremendous. Thank you.
So just to reiterate, on Monday, the 4th, we will be at 6:00 PM at the Board of Selectmen's meeting room. Though we will be on the education channel, we won't be on the gov channel. We will be having our deliberation and voting on the next superintendent. And again, the reason why we're meeting there and not here is strictly because we have to be there for another meeting immediately afterward. And we have an executive session in between and we did not want to rush through here, zoom down Main Street, jump into the next place. So that's the only reason. The Board of Selectmen will not be voting on our next superintendent. I did have someone ask me that today, so I wanted to clarify. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll be happy to hear a motion to adjourn.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Trissey, second by Ms. Lynch. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. After a roll call, right? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.